So this is live. You're live.
We're live on the recording, but we're not live out there.
I got you. Well, how's my hair? I can't see.
Yeah. You're good. Hey, guys, Conservatives of Texas, Alex Deanda here. We are also, as you know, the hybrid group for the precinct. We got Kent Powell over here. He's over the 123. How are you doing, Kent?
Doing good today.
Wonderful, wonderful. Mr. Travis Hayes, he's over the 110. How are you doing?
Doing great. I just want to thank everybody.
All right. And always the infamous, the notorious, the amazing. No, just okay. Jesse, Jesse Frimmer.
I'll be here.
What an amazing.
I made it.
Yeah. He is hopefully going to be installed in the 114 in spring. Hopefully so.
I wish I could swing this around and get you guys all on film. So you guys could see what I'm looking at. It's a motley bunch, let me tell you.
So we have the pleasure today. I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah. We're out here on location at his place here, Shark Beach. We have Brian Bailey. He's running for county commissioner of place one. Thank you for having us today.
Thanks for doing this. We appreciate it. It's important we get information out there of who the candidates are so that they're informed when they vote.
Exactly, exactly. And tuning up for the broadcast today, we've been bouncing off of Mr. Bailey on a lot of great conversation, you know, where you from, things of that nature. So now we'll kind of go back over some of those things. The name Shark Beach. Tell us a little bit about that.
So it was originally named Land Shark.
Okay.
And we came up just because it's land and we have a shark theme, so we're going to do that. And about two years into it, we got a letter from Jimmy Buffett. And he said, yeah, you can't do that anymore. So we had to change our name. And actually, it was kind of funny because he was actually, we kind of corresponded a little bit. Great guy, you know, he's passed, but very nice. He wasn't after us. But they launched some land sharks throughout Texas.
Oh, okay.
So we were kind of forced into that. But so we put a little feeler out, which we name it. So we came up with Shark Beach. So now.
It works. I hear a lot of good things about this place.
Thank you. It's the people that make it great.
Yeah, I hear you there. So you, tell us a little bit about who you are and kind of your heritage to the area? And just a little bit about your story.
Sure. So my wife actually grew up here. She was a Sandy. She graduated from WT. And then she left and she went to Dallas and she became a school teacher. Well, I grew up in Tucson, Arizona. Worked my way through college on an ambulance. Graduated with a community health degree. And I moved to Dallas. And I tried out for LAPD and I tried out for Dallas PD at the same time. Dallas called and said, hey, we want you in our academy. So my dad gave me a hundred dollar bill and I had an old truck. He goes, head to Texas. So I did. I got to El Paso and I bought a pair of boots that he wanted me to buy like that hundred bucks. And I found a payphone and I called him and I said, Dad, got a pair of boots. And he goes, well, LAPD just called and they want you in their academy next week. Well, Dad, what do I do? And he goes, where are those boots, boy? I go, well, they're in Texas. And he goes, you stay in Texas. So it's funny how the Lord works like that because I didn't know if I was going to turn back in my truck, go back through Arizona. I was going to go on Dallas. I tell you that story because then I met my wife in Dallas. Changed my life. We've been married 33 years. We stayed there for a little while. I was on the force for a little bit. And then we moved back to Arizona for a little bit. And that's where our entrepreneurial spirit kicked in. We never looked back. We've been entrepreneurs for the last 30 some years.
Right. I've heard from folks that you own a couple of other businesses. I don't know how many you can talk about or whatever the case is. But you own a couple of other businesses.
So so this is a funny question. So I'm a licensed private investigator here in Texas, but it's not like you think. So I like Magnum PI. I work exclusively for one individual and I only do very specific things. So I kind of have that on the shelf right now while I'm doing this. And I may just keep it on the shelf. But I do have that business. But no, we've sold all of our businesses. So this is pretty much what it is right now. And it's where my effort and energy lies. And you know, our boys are involved in this. And so it's kind of a family thing. And when we got here, we were just kind of passing through. We were going to sell this place when we sold our business on the island. And then COVID hit and for no better word, we got stuck here. And so my wife goes, you're a full grown man. You need a purpose or you're going to get in trouble. So I needed a purpose. And so we started this business.
Sure.
And I fell in love with that. I fell in love with the people. The Lord prospered it. And so we're done. We've started over 30 businesses in our life. It's what we did. It's what I think I was good at. But I'm done. I put a fork in it. So we're going to stay here. We love this. I love talking to the people.
Sure. What type of business was it that you had before this one?
Sure.
Padre?
Sure, sure. So we had a sober living house down there. We helped. It was only men. I started a medical clinic down there where we brought in ketamine infusion to help PTSD patients, treatment resistant depression. I did do some bio identical hormone replacement therapy, the botox, the things for the ladies. Well, guys do now do that. I sold that to the doctor that I'd hired. He ran it. I didn't per se have a medical background. Having four or five years on an ambulance doesn't, you know, doesn't qualify you for that. So but I saw a need there and I loved that. So but we sold it to the doctor. Doctor, I think recently sold it to a hospital. I had a safe and lock company down there that we started. I had a crew boat business down there. We serviced offshore oil industry for a while. That was a great business until Obama put a moratorium on drilling. Everybody says how bad Biden is, and he is. But let me tell you, Obama was right there holding hands with him. And Obama was, I think, equally if not worse than Biden. And he killed, he started, he was the beginning of killing us. So that's my personal opinion. Yeah, that's what I'll stand by. So I guess that was a long. I think it was a long answer to your question, but yes, business is what I know. And it's what I've done.
So the transition into, you know, whenever you heard about this position, county commissioner, what is it that you can apply to you feel just, you know, budgets and all that good stuff? I mean, being a business owner, I'm sure that that's a, there'll be a cohesive thing that you've done before. And you kind of, you can smell the aroma of certain things where you may need to tweak it here and there. Tell us a little bit about, you know, what you think, how you can apply your experience in business to what you'd be doing for the county.
Sure. Well, thanks. I think that's a good question. First of all, what is Randall County? I would ask you a question.
Sure.
Randall County is a business. You have 147,000 people that live here. You have $125 million budget. You have $40 million in debt, which collectively speaking for a county, it's not that bad. I think Christie Dyer and the other commissioners are doing a great job with that. I mean, look at Potter County. Well, that's horrific what they're doing over there as far as their budget and their debt. You have 550 employees. You have 800 miles of road. You have department heads. You have a business. It's a business, right? So it needs to be run like a business. What I believe is my strength over my opponent is that I am a businessman. That's all I've known. That's all I've done. I'll give you an example. So if I go in the restaurant right here and an employee drops a whole bunch of fries on the ground, the employee will look down and go, look at all those french fries on the ground. I will look down and go, that's money. Look at all the money on the ground. My cost of goods just went through the roof, right? It's just a different mindset. So getting back to your question, you have employees and you have entrepreneur, business people. Is one better than the other? Absolutely not. Both of them are vitally important. They're the bloodline and the backbone of our country. You need employees. You need entrepreneurs and you need businessmen. I am the entrepreneur businessman. But the big difference between them, between those two is they view money differently. I view money because it's all I've known for 30 plus years out of my back pocket. It's my money. When I start a business or I'm going and I buy a business to improve that business, I'm doing it with my money. So when you go to the budget of Randall County, if I'm your county commissioner, it's my money. I'm viewing that money differently than an employee would. Now, it's easy to read into that and go, so you're not getting employees and that they're not good stewards with their money. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying they've worn the hat of whether they're academia, retired academia like my opponent, or they work for a corporation, or they graduated from Pantex. It's the fact that they've always operated through those people's checking account. So when they write a check, it's different in their mind and the way they see it than when I write a check. So I think I will be a refreshing, good part of the county commissioner where some people on there, it's what they've done. They're retired from either law enforcement or Tam. I've talked to him. Great man. I've actually talked to every county commissioner. I called them all. I said, is there any way I could educate myself and talk with you guys? They were all so informative. They're all dialed in. Our county commissioners right now are good people. People want to bash them. They want to say, you're not doing, no, they're uneducated is why they want to bash them. We've got a great commissioners court. We really do. There's always room for improvement. Okay? But I think with my qualifications and my background and what I know, it will be refreshing to have a businessman on there. I've negotiated many, many, many deals. Okay, I'm relatively good at that with no pride whatsoever. As an entrepreneur, you walk this line between conceit and confidence. You just walk it. And I pray earnestly that I don't cross that line, but you better be confident going into a negotiation. And if I get this personally for me, I believe, and I'm going to get into my faith here in a minute, but you're going to give an account for every penny that you get. For me, this is more personal because now I've just went on to my balance sheet. Guess what? I got to put $125 million onto what I'm going to give an account for. And I take that very seriously.
How do we, how do we maneuver by way of some of these court type grants? Unless you do this or do that, you won't get the full amount. There's a contingency you'll find in a lot of these fractured.
With strings.
Yeah, there's always, yeah, he just went right to the jugular, but you get what I'm saying. There's always a contingency. We want you to, if you're going to want this $20 million grant for these roads or for whatever, a bridge or whatever the case is, we'd like you to have a health component to it that's going to open up some COVID vaccines or something of that nature. You know, we spoke earlier about the Rhino-esque and the establishment, things of that nature. You know, here in this state, you know, we have forms that are approved to the school district that have family planning on there and we're a red state. How does that get pushed through for a red state, right? Family planning is Planned Parenthood. That's all birth control. And that's at a high school? That's at a middle school? What is your plan when you face something like that? Because you may have your, you know, parameters, and I think they're great. And you have your litmus test. How do you convey and transition that thought process to the others if they're, if they're not where you're at? Do you have anything that you already prepared for here to, you know, because it's going to be three in one vote unless you see what I'm getting at? So how would you, how would you contend with that? Because we do see a lot of commissioner things where they rubber stamps up. I would, I would be interested to find out how many no votes we have from who and where and when. Because if they're just yes votes all across the board, it's just interesting to me. So how would you, if you have the three or the two or whatever, how do you, you know, you just point that out right out broad daylight and say, hey, this, there's a contingency here. There's, I don't think we agree with, I don't agree with what's on there. How do you win them out, or do you think? I mean.
Sure. So I think the first question I would ask is what is the opportunity cost to this grant?
Sure.
What are you giving up to get what? I mean, that's the core. That's the meat of the grant, right? They want you to give up your integrity and, you know, this or that, some core issues, but you're getting this massive prize. That's a no brainer, right? If it's, what is best for the people? Look, let's be real here. If I get elected, I am now for the first time in many, many years going to be working. I'm going to be an employee for my constituents, right? So it doesn't mean I'm now a dictator. It doesn't mean I put on my hat and everybody bowed to me. You need to listen to your constituents. So this is where me personally, on my level, my beliefs, iron sharpens iron. And it's a general question, how would I deal with this grant? But it's a very in-depth question. What is the grant? I have a little bit of experience with grants when we had the medical clinic, when we introduced ketamine infusion. We wanted to help the vets. We wanted to help people struggling with PTSD. Well, there are a plethora of grants out there to do this. So we actually hired a firm to do grants. I looked into grants. I helped write some grants. It's, as you just said, it is in depth and there are strings on a lot of them. So I can't answer that question to go, would I do this grant or that grant? I would have to specifically look at the grant. And the key to success in making a wise decision with a grant is knowing the ins and outs, looking at the whole body of the grant, disclosing everything in that grant. And then it's iron sharpening iron. You bring it before your constituents and you go, listen, we're going to get this. It's going to cost us this, but I think it's worth it. What do you guys think versus nope, we're going to get this, but we have to sell our soul. We cannot be the most conservative district anymore. Is it worth it? But we'll have endless amounts of money for our roads. Should we do it? So it goes back to, this is the third time I said it, but it's iron sharpening iron. You need wisdom. You need collective wisdom. I can't make that decision and I never would make that decision. But I will stand here, sit here, and I will tell you that if I'm opposed to something and morally, morally, I'm against it for my Christian values, I'm against it. I don't care what we're getting. I'm going to vote against it. So that, that would be my stance on that.
I'll ask you a question.
You bet.
Well, see, the Randall County had a conversation against the city in this collaborative effort, the collaborative effort over those jailhouse. Randall County is going to have to pay for this, this jail. And the city's needing to have a place to store their criminals. And how do you think this, this association that city, have you read anything about what the city's offered to Kelly?
I'm not versed enough to comment on that. I've read a little bit on that and I actually had a couple of, a couple of things on that. But it depends on what side of the fence you're making your thing. Because I, I kind of see both sides on it. So, you know, I don't know if that's a question or that I could be really informative to the people listening to this right now. And give you my point of view on that.
Because this is a recent conversation.
It is recent. So I kind of, until I became more informed, and I haven't talked to Christie Dyer, I know she gave a talk on it. Mayor Cole Stanley, actually Mayor Cole Stanley just endorsed me. So, you know, everybody's got their side, right? So, and that's why there's four county commissioners and a district.
Right.
Yeah, and a judge. And why you have constituents. So but sometimes, listen, sometimes you have to make tough decisions. And sometimes no matter what, you're not going to make everybody happy. I promise you, if I get elected, there'll be a group of constituents that go, that's not what you said. And I'm going to go, I can't make everybody happy. And the vast majority of the constituents here that I've talked to, they want it like this. And it's not a morality issue. So that's where my vote's going. It's not me up there going, well, this is what I'm going to do. You know, and I don't care if the four of you in my district don't want to do it. I'm doing it because it's what Brian wants to do. That's not my job. So.
You think you should talk to the sheriff about his feelings about this relationship with the city and his being able to accommodate.
So I, I think there's a time for that for sure. I haven't talked to the sheriff much. There's kind of different groups of people teaming up with different groups of people, supporting different people. I like the sheriff. You know, I like, I'm sure. I'm, here's my position on that, which, you know, he's going to, the sheriff's going to be working. Whoever the sheriff is, is going to be working with one of us. Pretty tight. So to put my horse in one of these barns would be foolish for me. So, and I'm not going to do that. And that's not a political thing. It's just, you need to stand back and see who wins. And then we win if there was some type of thing that you didn't like. You cleared the, you cleared the air right there. And you go, okay, we're now going to work together. Let's work together good. You know, let's bygones be bygones. And let's put the people before, you know, well, you backed him, not me, but I won. So hoo ha on you, you know. Yeah, we can't do that.
You guys have anything?
Yeah. What he was saying is, looking, looking at county virtue, Brian, there's a lot of money that gets invested in criminal activities, the law enforcement, our judicial system, a lot of county money goes there. So my question to you is, I'd rather see a proactive government system than a reactive. If you, if you're not proactive in investing in our youth, investing in changing these society problems, then you're just going to continually have those problems by being reactive. So I'd like to kind of get you to talk a little bit about what we're at.
So that's a, that's a great question. And it's a deep question. And being ex-law enforcement, I have quite a bit of, quite, quite a bit of opinions on that. But I am very proactive, very much so. And I know, you know, it's kind of, we're having this conversation, but it's kind of one of, one of the things that the sheriffs are, ones on this stage, ones on that stage. And it's not like our current sheriff isn't proactive, but you know, the other one's running on, we really need to bring these programs back. So they both have a great side, you know. And what's great about Randall County, and I'm sure we looked at this, but out of 10,000 crimes, we're at 300. Where Potter County is at 7,000 something. So the crime rate actually in Randall County is good. So to say that our crime rate is, is bad, so we need to do this, then that really wouldn't be accurate. Now, do I think in fact we need to educate? Without a doubt. I mean, goodness me, I was involved in that with Dallas. You go to high schools, you know, you do the dare programs. I'm for all of them for sure. Because it is better to be proactive than reactive. I mean, that's common sense without a doubt. But I think when you said throwing money, I'm not sure I understood that, like throwing money at salaries in police departments or not throwing money.
Salaries.
At salaries. Okay, well, look, the reason Randall County is growing is because it's safe. And because we have adequate police protection and we have adequate fire protection, which is one of the main things people look at. You know why people aren't going into Potter County? Is because it's, it's not that it's not safe. It's safe. And they have a great sheriff over there. But it, it's not Randall County, okay? And I'm just being blunt here, but, but you know, it's not. So people want to come here because the people are good, crime's low, you know, there's great establishments. It's a good place. It's a fun place. So we need to keep that. And that costs money. Let me tell you what we don't want to do. We don't want to train police officers here and then they leave. I talked to two people that were not police officers here. And I go, where'd you start? You go, Randall County. I go, why aren't you there? We went through the academy and two months later we bounced. And I go, you're kidding me? And they go, no. So I, I heard it from the source. This isn't what I've heard on the street. That has to stop. Are you kidding me? So what did that cost our county to train two officers? And they, they bounced for $2,000, $2,500? And how do you keep the cream of the crop, a fire or police unless you pay them? And here's a news flash. If you want the cream of the crop, it costs more money. I got an old Chevy over there. I may, may not make it to the gas station. But guess what? A Cadillac probably will. It costs more. So what do you want? I want security. I want safe environment. I want to be able to go to bed and not forget to lock my doors and go, it's 50/50. If my TV's there when I get back. So it, look, it's a debatable subject. It's one to where you're talking to me and I know you don't know me that well. But I will be characterized if I become a county commissioner. I don't just throw money at a problem. I'm a business owner. It's what I've done. I bought businesses knowing that they would improve and I could sell it for a profit later because they were throwing money at the problem. And they didn't identify the problem. So the first thing you need to do is really truly identify the problem. And it may not be just this big ugly monster over here. It may be a combination and we all got to give. But that's where, you know, you get the powers to be involved.
And here's my plug to kind of piggyback on what you're getting at. Always try to endorse Penhandle, Penhandle War Memorial. Tim Reed. And what he's doing over there. I believe that the proactive component that is being overlooked is the heritage factor in the youth going down to places like that and finding out what it costs us to be the land of free, home of the brave. I believe if they can invest in finding out the story behind the story, the why, I think that naturally the effect will be so well endured because you won't want to, you won't want to commit a crime against those that are your neighbors that live in this wonderful country that it is. So I would love to see our commissioners rally behind some type of program, maybe find a grant that would help people like Tim Reed out there at the War Memorial and Carlos Pena and the others out there to start a collaboration of some type of civics to say, hey, you know, because I'll tell you what, twice a year I go, when I see the missing in action, the person that's all in black, that is so. I take my daughters and I tell you what, it makes a, it makes a American fingerprint, if you will.
Yeah.
It really ties into your DNA right then and there. It's so, it's grievous.
Yes.
Of what these young men and women have to endure. They sign their name on the dotted line. And I think if we could get involved in something to that effect, I think that what you're getting at, Travis, I think that would really be some resolve.
I do too.
How do you feel about something like that? I don't know.
Absolutely.
I'm trying to put you on record, but would that be something to look at?
Without a doubt, it would be. There are so many things where we can improve.
Sure.
I mean, let's be honest with each other. I mean, we don't have this down to a science to where we need to sit back and go hunt.
Yeah.
Go have a beer, do whatever you do, right? There's always rooms for improvement. And like the market, like the economy, it's constantly changing. So if we really dial in over here, the time after ninja we spent over here is now changed this and now it's here. So we got to run over here and do this. Hence why we need a lot of people involved in this thing. So yes, very, very much so.
Yes. Kent, did you have something?
Well, originally, when I first came, I thought, okay, the thing I'm going to ask is, with your background in business, how would you approach? And you've answered that. Because it's refreshing to me to hear someone approach handling their money rather than from a government on, okay, we've been given all this money. What are we going to give away on? Rather than how are we going to make this work? And I appreciate that aspect for it. And, and thank you for having me.
Thank you. And I don't know if we're closing here, but before we do, you've heard me talk about this podcast about moral values, Christian values. But my faith, and if there's a takeaway here about me and the stage I stand with, it is my faith. Kalashian's two, three, Kalashian's three, two, three. I've said it my whole life and it's what I live by. Whatever you do, you work at it with all your heart, as if you're working for the Lord, not for man. I will be, you know, held responsible to my constituents if I'm elected. But my CEO, my boss, my foundation is the Lord. And I will give an account to him. So at the end of the day, when I go to bed, I pray for wisdom. I pray for discernment. And I pray that I do a good job. But I trust in the Lord and all that stuff. And I will never apologize for that. And if the woke funds their way in here and they're against me for this and that, I will never waver on that. So that's very important to me.
The way, the direction of the country seems to be under this premise of safety for you. I'm thinking about your safety. So I'm going to implement these, these overreaching, leveraging concepts of surveillance, if you will, technology, you know, our fourth amendment, it protects you from illegal searches and seizures. And you know, I've always been of the nature that, yeah, I appreciate you surveilling everything, but are you watching me without me committing any kind of a premise of a crime? Big corp wants to initiate these concepts. How do you, how do you prevent yourself from being seduced by these corporations? You know, drawing these types of values that don't sit well with Randall County? I mean, I know that it's a tie-in that has to happen to some degree. But where do you draw the line on this? If any, I mean, I'm not going to judge it either way. I'm just curious. How much is too much overreach in your opinion? I mean, because I work in an industry that basically told us, get the vaccine or you're done. You don't have a job. And we pushed back in, 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 you know, we didn't have to do it finally, but every month it was so leveraging. And we felt like, I don't think that's constitutional. I don't, I don't, I don't understand where you're getting away with this. So corporate communism was what I call it sometimes because they have this underlying effect. So as commissioner and just an individual yourself, I mean, how do you, you know, if they come tell your business, hey, you, you know, you can't, you got to mask up or you can't be open. The pandemic, all that stuff. What's your, you know, what in regards to that? If you could speak on those things.
Well, if I understand the question, because I think there's about three of them. The first part, my answer is it's too late. It's here. Technology is here. Them watching us is here. If any one of you have your phones on right now, you've been on TikTok, whatever, it's too late. They hear you. I sat there and I talked to my wife about a portable fireplace or something.
Sure.
And I got a ding two hours later. So that's too late. It's here. So the other part about, you know, what would I do? My philosophy is this, the best government is the government that's closest to the people. It's more responsive. That will solve a lot of it. If these are all kind of local decisions that can be made and governed by the people, you're not going to have those situations where everybody asks to wear a mask. No, we don't all have to wear masks. I didn't wear a mask. I was asked to leave so many times from establishments. My wife would be going, okay, it's like I'm afraid to go out with you anymore. I'm not, I'm not bowing to knee. I'm not going to do it. You're not going to tell me to do that. I did not get a shot. And it's not that I wasn't educated on that. I became educated. I had a clinic. But I'm not going to do that. Are you kidding? Are you kidding me? Okay, I'm not even going to go into this. But, but I think it comes to education. And people at first, and, and they, they just so need jerk reaction, this COVID thing going, we got to do this, you're saving lives. And so they press this premise of if you don't wear a mask, you don't care about other people and you're killing them. That was so untrue. That was so not fair. And then it started, and they love that fan because the fire grew bigger because it's their Christians. It's these God people. See, they're not loving, they're not caring, they're not Christ like, like they preach. They hate you and they want to kill you. So that whole thing was just a disaster, right? But no, I, I'm for what our four founders brought, you know, freedom from government. Government's not created to be our dictators. We need to take this back and we have to have government. We have to have leaders, but it's on the local level. You guys would all agree, the farther you go up, we're not even in any of this, any of these decisions being made. They don't know what we want, they don't get what we care. They have their own agenda. So on a local level, going to that, to your, I think your last question, what would I do about this? I would want to educate people. This is what we're being asked to do. This is why I'm opposed to it. What are your feelings? This is where you have town hall meetings. This is where we all get together and you collectively get together. And in this case, you would bring in doctors, you would get in people that are experts in this and go, listen, none of us want to expose people to getting sick. Heaven's know, who wants to do that? But none of us want to be, you know, under the direction of the dictatorship of some puppet telling us what we need to do because they're trying to destroy our country. So it's, that, that's a, that's a tough question. That's probably the toughest question I got asked today. But, you know, everything's individual, everything's educational and everything iron sharpens iron. And for me to sit here and go, well, this is what I would do. There's information that I don't have on some questions and I've been asked so many questions, you know, and you're like, I don't know. And I've said that, I don't know the answer to that. So that would be an individual question, like I, I'm not, you know, we'll, we'll see when that time comes. But I'll tell you what I did and I just did tell you what I did during the whole mask thing.
May I ask you?
Sure.
We've, we've often raised the question, if you're a Republican, if you're a Republican, will you support the party in Randall County by your presence at different meetings with the, with the party activity with the CECs? Would you be cognizant of trying to interface with your office as commissioner of the county to come and visit with the precinct chairs that are representing Republican Party?
So I think that's imperative that you do that. And when I think you commit to run as a county commissioner, that's just, it may not be in writing, but you're signing off to do that. You see, let me tell you my understanding of if I get elected county commissioner, I'm working for you. So how do I communicate to you what's going on in the county without seeing you? I mean, I only see you now that I get elected. It's like, hey, Alex, I'll see you in a couple of months. No, actually, I'll see you in four years when I run for election again. You can't do that. You, you cannot do that. And my wife and I, I'm not announcing this because I haven't even won, but every other week is the county commissioners court, right? You guys all know that. I've been going to them. You got to educate yourself. Why am I running for this office and I don't know what they do, right? And so I go to these meetings and, and I, and I learned from these meetings. And I thought it, it would, it would be interesting to go, hey, what if the Monday before the Tuesday meeting, you know, your county commissioner is right here? And I'm here from 11 to one, sitting right here at this chair. And if you got a question or a concern or anything, you know where to find me. That's one of my selling points running here is because you know where to find me. I know so many people, I go door to door, door to door and they open it and I go, what do you need? I go, I'm just one here to say, oh, you're the Shark Beach guy. So it's kind of funny. And then I get to talk to them. But great question. And yes, you need to stay involved. You can't just be a one-hit wonder. I won the election, yay, good for me. Now it's cool. And, you know, but no, you, you have to do that.
I appreciate that.
You have to be involved. And you guys are the ones on the ground. They should be paying you guys, honestly. I mean, you guys are talking to the people more than we are. So.
Well. We appreciate that, but we, we, I can speak for myself. I'm sure Jesse's supposed to say, we love our country, we love our community. And what we try to do is bring you to the people to the degree where it's all love, it's all fellowship. And I believe that it's just harder for anyone to do anything weird or crazy if.
Bring it to the light.
That's your, that's your, that's your buddy, that's your friend, you know what I mean? One last question, then I'm going to give you three to five minutes to close on why people should, you know, vote for Brian Bailey, okay? We had an event a couple of months ago. Dr. Douglas Frank came on restoring the seven steps to restoring election integrity. And you and I had a conversation about that before we came on. And I like to keep the wording election integrity because I think it goes further than just paper ballots. Paper ballots is important, but you know, as we seen in the movie 3000 years, that's where they cheated on paper. It was in the absentee ballots. They were shoveling, shoving through those, you know, ballot boxes. No one polices that. We have poll watchers, but no one has absentee ballot watchers, you know? So I think going to paper is, is, is an idea, but really we have to restore the integrity of the whole process across the board. What's your opinion on that? Where do you, where do you, you know, how do you feel about, you know, the whole process?
So my answer to that question would be, election integrity is crucial.
Yes.
If we lose our vote, we lose our country. We lose anything that is of any value. So keeping the election to where there's even a slight doubt that it was wrong or dealt with in a way that it moved the results, the consequences are horrific. So election, you know, integrity is everything. I, I went and met with Shannon Lakey. I think she, sorry, I've met her. With Shannon, I called her Shannon.
You did, you did.
Okay, good.
I was great. I said, great, I'm sorry.
Okay, good. I was like a mispronounced name. Fail.